I'm going to call the monthly meeting of the Stormwater Committee to Order. It's Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. It's 1:15 PM. We're in the upper level meeting room at the Old Town Hall. This is a public meeting being audio recorded, audio and is it video also? Audio and video recorded, cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dighton-ma.gov and YouTube. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, call this killing.
Yeah.
Mr. Melo.
Yeah.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Mr. Figurito.
Yeah.
School art here. Mr. Figurito is here representing the planning board in place of Mr. Wood. Okay, we've got one item that wanted to take out of order. Is this by A? Ross?
Um, no, it would be the railroad bed cleanup Diana from mosquito control. So that's first on the agenda. She just needs to leave. And we have that hearing at 1:30.
For G?
For A.
A.
There are motion to take item, agenda item 4A out of order.
I'll make that.
You have a motion?
Not out of order because we haven't gone into the public hearing yet. So technically it's the first thing.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that, Joe. All right. So would you come to the podium, please, and introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Diana Brennan. I'm the Wetlands Coordinator for Bristol County Mosquito Control Project. So um, I guess I'll just give some backstory on the work we did there. So we were contacted by Mr. Enos at 2421 County Street about the ditch or the railroad bed that runs behind his property. And that we could do some ditch maintenance there to alleviate some mosquito breeding concerns. So my predecessor planned the project originally. And I took over in 2017. We dug a drainage ditch up into the back of the property. That was our best, not guess, but our best professional judgment of where the old drainage ditch used to be. There were no traces of it left. And then we stopped at a certain point because there was a wetlands that was acting as a vernal pool that had more mosquito predators in it than mosquito larva. And so in our best professional judgment, we decided that we would end the ditch there and that larvicide was a better option for mosquito treatment.
And I have a question. Did you say Mr. Enos asked you to go to the site in 17?
Uh, he asked my predecessor prior to that. He's the contact person on the file.
Okay, but you came out at the request of, I thought, the Stormwater Committee or Mr. Ferry this time?
Yes, so.
Okay.
We had cleaned the ditch back to the pond in the back. And Mr. Enos came back multiple times to hopefully have us clean farther out and drain that pond. So Mr. Ferry and I have been in contact today. We went and did a site meeting today to review the reasons why we didn't do the drain that pond in the first place. So this is sort of just a synopsis of what I had done. Yep. So it's a that's a mosquito issue. Myself and the entomologist determined that larvicide was the best approach for mosquito control in that pond. Question.
Okay, so my understanding, the reason we asked Bristol County to come out again is to look at the illegal dumping and filling to give us some guidance about how much has to be removed along that railroad bed, not only his property, but the property of Dr. Vaught?
Right. So that's kind of outside of my purview. So my mandate is strictly regarding mosquito habitat. So any of my, often my work correlates to stormwater management because often mosquitoes breed in clogged stormwater drains and in stormwater impounded areas. So there's often like a win-win when I do my mosquito control. There's also benefits for stormwater management. But in this case, there's a sort of a discrepancy between my mosquito control goals and the goals of alleviating that issue.
Okay, but what we were looking for was not so much Mr. Enos's problem. Dr. Vaught has an area behind his home. The last time we were there, early spring, it was green. This water is not flowing.
Right.
When he bought the house, I don't know how many times he hired the mosquito guys to come out. And they said, this is, you're wasting your money. That water has got to be freed. So have you seen Dr. Vaught's property?
I have.
This is the property that the two are buddy.
Okay.
Not Mr. Enos with the
Oh, yes, there's.
There's two.
Which Enos did you visit? Ralph?
Al.
Oh, okay. He's not on the problem list. Sorry, there's a.
Screaming away. So it's up against laws, so.
Thank you.
But so what about the the green water at Dr. Vaught's property?
So that water is where I observed amphibian breeding. And also when I went out there to, I dipped with a, it's, we call it a dipper, but it's basically a white cup that we use to check for larva. And I also put out some larval traps. And when I dipped and did those traps, what we observed, what I observed was that there were more mosquito predators, dragonfly larva, other kinds of aquatic beetles and things like that that eat mosquito larva than I actually found mosquito larva. So my mandate is to, and my best management practices are that I have to use my best professional judgment, especially if there's potentially a vernal pool involved, assess the risk benefit of draining versus other methods of mosquito control. So in this particular instance, we felt that draining would be more detrimental and helpful to the resource. And that the mosquito larva could be effectively controlled in that location with the larvicide.
Okay. We had also talked about the fact that when Dr. Vaught bought that property, it had already been filled in. Somebody built the house and filled in out of that railroad bed. Um, is the vernal pool the green water we saw?
Yes. And it's not, to be clear, it's not a certified vernal pool map. But in my, I observed amphibian breeding going.
Okay.
So that's why I'm using that word.
So is there flow along that area that you've noticed?
It was difficult to say today because of the drought. So there was no flow coming out today. Um, in the past, the ditch that we did bring up to close to that area has had water flowing in it down into the catch basin system. Um, there is a very narrow, so where the fill area that you're talking about um, kind of abuts Mr. Enos's property, it narrows down the railroad bed significantly.
Right.
And there's, there's a choke point with some debris and sediment that do hold water back. So even if I were to remove some of the debris, tree stumps, things like that, um, there would still be standing water in there.
Right. And the narrowing is still there.
Right.
Okay. Um, the, so you, did you say you put larvicide in that pool?
It's on the larvicide list. So that's a different group than the Wetlands Coordinator, but I did confirm this morning with our admin assistant that it is still on the larvicide list.
Which means somebody will do it?
It should, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Was, did you happen to meet Dr. Vaught? Was he around?
I met many of the people who lived, I met all of the people who lived abutting this area in 2017.
Okay, he wouldn't have been there then.
Yeah. So I haven't.
Okay. Does anybody have questions about anything you've read? Okay, so the only thing I would ask is that when they actually do the larvicide, if you could let Tom Ferry know, just so you can give us an update? And and will your, whoever's going to do it, will they notify Dr. Vaught ahead of time?
They can certainly. Um, is, can I be provided with his contact information?
Uh, yes, Mrs. Grass can give that to you. And, and I will tell you, he's been very cooperative. Said we could go on his property anytime, which we wouldn't do without somebody there anyhow. But uh, I think he'll be relieved because obviously he had been spending money for nothing because of the mosquitoes.
Yeah.
And maybe the drought for him was a blessing this summer. But at least he knows that there are natural forces eating larv, but also you're going to put down something. So that's, that's.
Specifically targets.
Problem.
Yeah.
I don't know how many times he hadn't come out and the man told him, you're wasting your money.
Right.
So anyhow, um, does anybody have no questions, no comments, anything? We're all set?
Yeah. Thanks.
Let, um, so now my question is, when you were out there this last time, did you encounter anybody that gave you grief? Don't say the name.
Probably been Mrs. Berry.
Did any of that?
There was only one neighbor who came out to speak to us and it was someone who had requested that we not do work on their property. So we hadn't worked on their property.
Who was the brother of the original person who contacted you?
Yeah.
No?
A different neighbor.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you very much for coming in. Uh, we've got just a couple of minutes. Do we have anything on agenda item 4B? We heard from DEP. Oh, 2371.
I'm sorry, 4B?
Yeah.
I reached out to DEP. Apparently Mr. McCott, Chief over there, we met us on site. He lost his assistant. She's now working for VHB. And I, as I recall, he was trying to retire soon, so the agreement that we're waiting for from DEP is all on, everything's on hold until they figure stuff out, but he said he would be in touch with a the date for a meeting for him.
Oh.
So we'd be having like an in-person meeting not on site to discuss an agreement with 2371 County Street.
And he's going to meet with the CONCOM?
Yeah.
Okay. So when that's going to happen, if you'd let us know so that
In a month.
So that anyone from Stormwater that wants to be there, because obviously we're all wondering what's going to happen and
Okay.
since CONCOM's taken the lead, what else can be done on the part of Stormwater? Okay, so we'll, we'll wait to see what they tell CONCOM. Okay?
Sounds good.
We have anything on 4C, Wellington Acres?
Um, John Mitchell contacted me and said he had spoken with John Ajax? Am I pronouncing that correctly? And he's supposed to be getting Todd's information today. Okay.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda for the next.
Okay.
Um.
I'm sorry, who is that? John was Ajax? The attorney for Lopes, Wellington Acres. Okay. Sorry.
Okay, it's, okay, we're all set there. So this will be on the agenda for next month, as will 2371, if we hear from DEP, or CONCOM hears from them in the meantime, but we'll just each month say that we have anything. We'll know whether I'd bring it up. It's almost 1:30. So who's going to make the presentation for Longville Homes, Hunter's Hill?
Doesn't appear that the applicant is here.
Okay.
Oh.
I think we. How do we shut it? How do we shut it? Yeah.
No, it's just 30 seconds you got.
Oh, shoved on the wall by the fence.
Oh, thank you.
Only we would aim it at the camera, but I don't know if the camera is going to be able to show it at this distance. Like, say you can barely, like, see my hands, so even towards the crowd.
What's the, this back?
I don't want to call the podium.
Who's he left this? And then move that back.
You don't?
Right, my line.
Okay, it's 1:30. I request the vote to open the public hearing, the continued public hearing for Longville Homes. Is there a motion to open the hearing? We have a motion to open the hearings, or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then all in favor? Melo? Perry?
I.
Figurito, you're on.
One piece of paper I need in my, in my car.
Uh-oh.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Evan Watson with W Engineering, representing the applicant. Thanks for your patience. My breath, because so here we have a revised set of plans dated September 19th. We've updated, revised the plans. We've updated, revisized the stormwater report. And it's been reviewed by Green Environmental, by Green International, rather, by Mr. Shaheen. And so the very important piece of paper I need out of my car was his letter that says he's reviewed the project and we've met all of his requirements.
Evan, before you continue.
Yes.
Are these plans the latest that every board and commission in this town should have?
Yes, so.
Planning and conservation and everybody else had this exact plan?
Yes. So um, plan is, we didn't get a chance to attend the last conservation hearing, but this plan is in front of the Conservation Commission's Review Engineer. So he has that same set of plans. And then we're going to the planning board tonight with this set of plans.
CONCOM tomorrow night?
Yeah.
It was last week.
Require, you know, requires additional information to come before us two weeks prior to the meeting so that we can have time to look at it. That's why I asked him to hold off till the next meeting.
Good.
So I've been in conversations with Steve Ventreska, Review Engineer. And probably the reason why I came in at the very last minute on two wheels is because he said that they were done with their review and I could expect a letter by 1:00 PM. And so I left at 1:15 PM. And I still didn't have the letter. However, they did complete their review. And I'm expecting to see a letter with minimal, if any, comments from them.
Now, that's, who do they represent?
The Conservation Commission.
Who is, who are you? Who is the CONCOM using for review?
Niche, however, last time I spoke with Niche, they were supposed to get me an estimate for the additional work. They never did, so we never approved the additional work.
I think he said he was all set. So I know he did the additional work. So he looked at it and said, no, I think we're good to go with, we're under budget. Because I talked to him and I said, hey, you know, if there's additional money you need, let them know right away and I'll facilitate. We'll get the check over to you right away. Then note, we'll be, we're fine with what we have, so.
He didn't respond to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
So yeah, I was in correspondence with Ron, which is the Senior Product Engineer, who the letter, and he said that Steve just had to do the final review and Steve's the one that actually issues the letter. So I expect that to come anytime. So so in my hand, again, while I ran to the crowd, is the letter from Mr. Shaheen, the review of these plans and stormwater report, which I have a paper copy of both the plans and the stormwater report I could submit. I also brought some 11 by 17s if anybody wants to look at them now. But I don't expect there to be really any changes to this set of plans beyond tonight. We're going to the planning board tonight. And given that their consultant has issued a clean bill of health and we've answered any questions that the planning board's input or any of their butters have had, I expect that they would close the hearing for their portion of the project.
So what's the status with CONCOM on this project?
I haven't, I haven't reviewed the review letter yet.
Okay.
We're waiting for that to come in.
Okay. So what did you have there that you were stormwater related specifically?
Um, so we have this set of design plans. I have the stormwater report. And again, the, the only thing that he asked us to change in the stormwater report, he asked us to include the 25-year storm, which we did. He asked us to rerun the piping from the 10-year storm to the 25-year storm, which we did. I think the original design was based off of the 10-year. But even so, we ran it for 25 and made everything work that way. Um, he asked us to include a couple of items in the O and M to add the overflow spillways and the detention, sorry, the four bay spillways to the O and M plan, which we did. So those were the tweaks that he asked us to do. Other than that, as far as I understand, we meet the stormwater standards from the state. Todd is actually very accommodating. He came out with us a few weeks ago. We did a few groundwater test pits within the detention basin areas. And we did confirm that we have pretty tight, tight soils there on the site. It's, you can see it all the way around the site. Water table is at about two feet where we're proposing the wet basins. So I think that, you know, Todd can tell you a little more if he wants to, but that was good for the type of detention basin design that we're going for.
Mr. Pilling?
Uh, yeah, I was out there and I can confirm a lot of it. It was very high. The soil is a very tight, first water is what most people place it though. Looks like drums. I guess the only real issue I have is the fact that these are wet basins that are considerably it's not usually the thing, like, to have wet basins and have deep basins. But I have not reviewed this final set of plans that has come in yet. So I haven't seen patients who may base on those test pits, but I know, like I said, they are wet bases.
What are we talking about for depth after a storm and it drains the way it's supposed to drain? What's left?
Five feet below the outlet. And then the it all complies with, in this, I'm sorry.
If the pipe is up here, the outlet pipe.
Yep.
It's, there's no water from here for five feet?
Nope, there is five feet of water.
Up to that pipe?
Always standing water five feet deep.
That's right. So that's similar, when we went out for the site walk and we saw the detention basin that was there, we saw a little bit of water in the middle. But that was extraordinary because we were in the middle of the drought. So the water had gone down quite a bit. But on a normal day to day, it's at the elevation of the invert. So that matches up with the stormwater handbook for wet basin. It provides superior water quality for the 80% TSS removal. And what they ask is that a five-foot-deep permanent pool is there. But what we did, a safety, is we have, you know, we have slopes of three to one around the outside. But when we get to the water, we go to five to one. So before you got to one foot deep of water, you'd have to walk out five feet. Two feet of water would be 10 feet. And the five feet of water wouldn't be until 25 feet into the water. So nobody can actually fall into the, to the water.
Just rough dimensions, what's the size of this? Is it an oval? Or can you tell me it's like?
Like a bean shape? Yeah, it's a, the detention basin shape, you know, it's.
Well, well, the problem with that is we prefer infiltration basins. So when you tell me it's going to hold water, I need more than just, it's going to hold water. Because I've seen the kind that I call pits.
So is wet basins, is that like a planning board waiver or something like that?
We have that waiver. That was with the, oh, I'm sorry. Thought you were talking to me. I'm sorry.
That's a lot of some hope.
We have a waiver from the planning board. Part of the approval for these detention bases. And keep in mind also that these basins were the original design that was approved before. And what we're actually asking to have modified is just to move it outside of the 100-foot buffer zone. So this one is a triangular shape. So it'll be a four bay and then.
Is that a new one or is that, that one we, is, when we were out there, we saw?
This is a proposed basin.
Okay.
The existing basin, the training cover sheet was here at the end of this cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And the new basin, there'll be one here and then one on the back. And then I can show you the larger basin. Again, this is the same basin that was previously approved. It's kind of this bone shape here. So there's a good four bay. Then what we do is we do a constructed wetland zone. And then we have the deep water basin and then the outlet. And that's behind all of the locks of the woods. DPW did ask us to add a fence, so we put a post rail fence around it.
A post and rail fence as opposed to a chain link to keep whatever out?
Yeah, the idea was that if you look at the previous basin, that we, there was no fence there. And people actually go for a walk around it and they can see the turtles and they can, could go fishing there or whatnot. So we didn't necessarily want to prevent somebody from getting in there or encourage somebody to climb the fence and jump in there, but rather to let them know this is the basin area.
So.
We're working with them on that.
You?
No, I, in the minutes.
T W.
I'm sorry, not TP.
Jim Agia.
Yes, Dylan Inspector. Thank you.
Um, so what's the rough dimensions of that? I mean, I realize, if that were an oblong, just, just say it's, it's so many feet by so many feet, a guess.
It's large. It takes a large area, so. 200 by 200 in here?
Okay. So since it's going to be water in it all the time, is there an exchange of water from the ground?
Yeah, so it's, it is in the water table. And what will happen is the water table will be in the water table here and will be above the water table here. So it will come and store here. And then what will happen is when it rains, we have a storm. There's permanent pool in the four bay. So new stormwater will come here. Also, the, anything that's in there will settle out. The water will come through the constructed wetlands where the plants can bring up any of the nutrients and things. And then it will exchange through here. So there'll be both groundwater coming into the basin and water that goes into the basin that actually goes into the groundwater as well. We can't necessarily take credit for it because it's not infiltration BMP. But if you looked at the other basin, in times of drought, that water is there and actually did infiltrate into the ground.
So with that exchange, shouldn't prevent of mosquitoes and all that other good stuff that you're talking about on another situation?
Yes, so where we have, like you said, a pit in the ground. Oh, yes, yes, very good. We have a pit in the ground and there's little bits, pools of water here and there. The only animal that can live there is a mosquito. You get a lot of mosquitoes. So we've done a lot of basins similar to this. And what happens is in the four bay and in the shallow things, you get a lot of frogs and tadpoles and fish and things. And those will eat the mosquito. So if you can. So if you can provide a good mixed wildlife, you know, a habitat for other wildlife, you'll see the mosquitoes will, will stay down. Or it won't be any different than anywhere.
Okay. Any members have comments, questions?
Just, um, where are we with the fence now?
Well, I've had, we had talked to. In the field. And he mentioned that there may be a requirement in building code that requires this pool of water that we. Have a fence.
I believe it's a bylaw.
General bylaw. So. He said that he made a consideration to this post rail fence versus a chain link fence. Given that it's behind, they're not right up against houses, they're relatively far away in the open space. But we would talk, we could talk to the planning board about that, sure.
I, I guess my concern about the fence is, I realize that it's, there aren't kids per se in the neighborhood, however. There could be children visiting. Anything but a chain link fence around a pond, because that's what it is. That retains water permanently. Quite frankly, I. It's not like, this is outback, so it's not gonna detract from. The attractiveness of any of the homes or anything else, it's gonna be out there and with a chain link fence. It still can provide walking around it that people who live there that want to enter through a gate, walk around, whatever. But the fact that it's not a, in my opinion, secure fence. It, it's a concern to me, anybody else have comments?
I do. Tends to the planning board or to each stormwater?
The fence? The fence? Depends, the general bylaw.
We approve the plans, right, on the planning board? That should be included into that, am I?
Yes, so I believe the planning board would do anything under the planning board rules and regulations. And anything under the definitive plan and anything under the general bylaw or zoning would go to the building inspector.
If I can read the general bylaw, it's Article seventeen, artificial pools. No person in possession of real estate shall have an artificial pool having a depth of twenty-four inches or more at any point. Unless the same shall be enclosed by a protective fence, these four feet high design materials and instructions shall have been approved by the building inspector. Or by such other artificial owners that shall have the fence so approved. And not about the gates and fences and that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know of any stormwater basin that we have required. To be fenced. The other thing, any, anything other than chain link.
Yes, I believe chain link is what is generally requested by the.
I, I'm appalled at a rail fence and I, and I'm not being critical of Mr. Agia. I'm just appalled that it's even being brought up, my personal opinion is, uh, chain link. And I'm trying to think, where was there a discussion about a fence? And fourthly, after we talked about it, the builder, the proponent. Said they would go to a six link, six-foot fence. I remember this coming up somewhere a while ago, but the main concern is. I can certainly understand the people who live there, the adults that wanna go for a walk and check out. Whatever's living out there, the turtles, the tadpoles, the critters, whatever. But I have a real problem with a rail fence, since stormwater has not allowed that anywhere. And we've even had. Was it Brook Street where we cry, we required a six, or is it a four on top of the basin?
Brook Street is inside their perimeter fence, so that's why there was a big difference.
But initially, there was discussion about that, maybe it was, I'm thinking of the perimeter fence there, but. I, I think this fence thing needs to be looked into further because I am not comfortable with that at all.
As you ask the questions, would fall in the jurisdiction of the planning board, stormwater, building inspector, possibly even highway. Because obviously this is a maintenance thing, also.
But if, if it's gonna be an issue, we can certainly put a chain link fence, it's, it's fine, it wouldn't be an issue.
Well, as I say, it's not like it's, it's going to be in a place that is going to detract from. Property values or who wants to look at that all ugly chain link fence? It's really a safety measure and a rail fence just doesn't do it, to me, that's a decorative fence. It just doesn't provide the protection that would be needed. Anyone else have comments here from the board? Hearing none, hearing none, I'll open it up, public input, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Come to the podium, which is right over here. Or a name, address, and then you can speak, okay?
The first thing is, I don't know what address, I'm sorry, Sandy Souto, thirty seventy-three Hunter's Hill Drive.
Did you get that, Mrs. Grassi? And S O U T L?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
So where is this new drain area going to be? Because I'm on the corner of Hunter's Hill and Clubhouse, right around the corner, way in the back. There's a huge one back there with great big, you know, things that come in and out, very big, no fence. With this summer, I don't think there was much water in there at all, actually. But I would like to know, hey, where is this new one being placed in relation to where I'm living? And.
Get back a little more so.
I can show you, like this. If you're on the corner of Hunter's Hill and Clubhouse here. And so here are these two basins.
That would be nice. He's still back, then she can see it and everyone else can see it too.
So you are here, here are these two basins. So we're going to extend, you know, with the, this have the. One clipping area and things over here, we're gonna extend the road through this and Miranda Way will extend through. So we have one here and one here, so this one might be considered a mile away, it's, it's, it's pretty far away. And this one is, so you won't see these from.
And, and our drainage goes through to those, is that?
Your drainage goes to these.
Continues to go.
And so everything on this road to about here continues to go through. This basin will pick up this new road of Miranda Way. And this basin is, is large because it takes the rest of Miranda Way, the rest of Clubhouse and all of this into there. So that's why these two are large, because it's a bit more.
So. So the, the two existing are not fenced in. They're very few young children in the neighborhood, as you could well. But I do recall there was a youngster living on Hunter's Hill. And, oh, his friends would come in on their bikes and they were all over the place. And once in a while, my grandson went biking with them and I, I, I tend to sort of chase them. I wanted to be sure they were not near that drainage because that made me quite nervous that it was not fenced in. I'm all for a fence, is a four, four-foot fence good enough? Think so, I don't know how anybody else feels, but, you know, and we can't see them, right, we can't see any of these from our homes.
None of the new ones, I don't know if you can see these, there may be some people that can see them from.
You might see them from the backyard.
Yeah, I can't see any of that, but it may be as you develop around that corner.
This, this one is in part in the open space, so there'll be woods between here and there. And then this one, again, if they end up kind of opening up their backyard, they might see it, but the intent is to have trees across there.
So your intent is to put a four-foot fence?
Yes, that's the, the bylaw, so we would do that.
And your question is, is that enough?
Uh, it needs discussion.
Yeah, I think so, so.
I would say that since it is a private organization and that. You know, obviously, there is an existing community here that has some. You, you guys had a meeting and wanted a fifteen-foot-high fence, so we're putting in fences and you guys, you know. Wanted to add on to what we're doing, if we're bringing a fence, we might be, you know, we could have that discussion.
Yeah, yeah, that's good to know. I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. So was it those two new basins that we were talking about, the rail fence?
I was telling, saying rail fence on any of the basins, but we, we can get, we can.
Were you planning to put rail fence on the existing basins?
Yeah, we would. After the discussion we had in the field, we would put rail fence, but now we can do one of the changes.
From Hunter's Hill?
I pulled up the planning board regulations, I have read these reports on the, now. Section forty-three twenty about the use of open. Above ground, so a lot of detention, retention or infiltration facilities is prohibited. Unless the variance is granted by the dieting board. Then, should the variance be granted, then any basin needs to conform with this whole bunch of regulations after that. One of them is that all aspects of the extension basin shall be designed with safety in mind. Fence to the landscaping shall not inhibit emergency access. Basin shall be no more than three feet deep. And the side slopes have to be at five to one on the outside of these. And there's all that stuff there, but so I, these are planning board regulations, not board upgrades, I was not aware of this for how fast.
My, my concern is that we are spending a lot of time on this right now, are, are they gonna spend, are we gonna spend? The same amount of time when they come before us. And those are the things that I just wanna try, one board should do one thing, one board should.
Yeah, we, we, we have addressed that, because that was in the previous approval and those regulations were there.
Two thousand four?
Yeah, that's right.
So the, the board health in existence is a separate entity, so I'm not aware of whatever happened then. So this may have already been resolved, but maybe the expenses are to be designed with safety in mind, so that would imply a change.
Okay. And they're willing to do it, so.
Okay. So when you go back to the, I'm just curious, you go back to the planning board, what is it now that they have to review again?
So they've reviewed the plans and they were happy, they liked the design. With the modification of the previous design, and we've reduced this roadway width, we've added this new road. And then they were essentially waiting for the return of their consultant's review, which we have. So that's what they were looking to, to go over is saying.
Concom is waiting for an opportunity to review the information also, right, you're waiting? Well, obviously, I think this is going to get continued, I would think, because we need to know what planning ceilings are and what Concoms are. And I think that the fence issue is going to stay on the agenda for the stormwater committee as. If we can, meaning we'll check into it, but certainly it's pretty clear what this town is looking for, as far as protection.
I don't have a problem, especially after they said that they are willing to do it, so I think it should.
Are there, any other questions, comments, or anything else about Hunter's Hill? Yes?
This, this is a swell that behind lots, under twenty-four, twenty-five, basically fifteen, seventeen, eighteen. Depending back to the catch basin, and the statement is that it doesn't seem to be draining the water to the catch basin above as it should be. You know, like when I was there, I feel like it's covered and there's a small pipe through it for a certain section, like they would drive him through it. Through the vacant lot, and I'm wondering if that's restricted. And that's supposed to be removed at this point in time or if that area is being addressed at all.
So there's two things that address that comment, one is. Is why this is all being exceeded, is there, what, there was a roadway that was designed across here that was. To pick up that drainage and bring it into the system, with it not being there, all that water flows into that swell, which is there. So to counteract that, we've added this swell to pick up that drainage in absence of the roadway. And then in the original design plans of this section, which we're not modifying. There is a swell that comes in between here and it was built relatively poorly. So it's our intent to, to put that the way it was shown on the plan, so, yeah, we, we recognize that is a, an issue out there, so.
Okay, Mrs. Grass, you had a communication from someone who owns land there, could you just read that for the. Benefit of the person who made the comment and also for everyone present?
And she just wanted, couldn't get here today, she only got the notice yesterday, and she didn't want to. Regarding their law being impacted or ran into.
And I believe that was pretty much. Same type of issues for everything.
Her issue, we discussed it at nauseam at the planning board.
It was much more serious.
Well, yes, so there was, her lot was not shown as, it was shown as being part of. The project that was owned by the applicant, and so we've revised the plan to correct that so that. Her lot is still shown in its entirety the way it was, and actually brought this. It was this lot here, this is how it was before, and then we revised it so that it's exactly the same now. So that, that, that was her concern.
Okay. Just for the benefit of the residents of Hunter's Hill. What was just described and what we're talking about is only stormwater. You obviously have a, you're gonna have, oh, that new part has a whole new, I'll call it septic system, treatment, whatever. Everything we're talking about is only related to stormwater, they're not connected, they're separate systems, okay? Mr. Pilling, did you have something?
No.
Any else? Hearing none.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, I know there's the vernal pools in there. And L E C was gonna take a look at them in the fall, so do you know where they're at with that?
I don't.
Okay, because that's something we're gonna ask at Concom, I mean. I know we said it requires further investigation, but. Far as the potential vernal pool that's adjacent to one twenty-six, one twenty-seven and that. Yeah.
If we said that's a vernal pool.
Okay.
We, we basically gave up and said, well, we. No, that's fine, so the two, we had one, two, three potential vernal pools instead of. And then there was one over here that is dried up, this is a little man-made, nothing here, so we just concede and said. Instead of waiting for the fall and et cetera, we'll just concede and say that they are vernal pools and we'll give them the two hundred-foot protection. Minus this swell that we need to put in here and any rehab that we do there, so. That's where we're at for that.
Possibly have them certify them, that'd be great.
Well, we can give this, you know, we'll give you the two hundred-foot protection, you'll do the extra work for that, but.
Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to continue. Motion is a second. We have motion, a second to continue this, our next is. Up till the nineteenth. Go with one thirty again? Uh, yes, that, that. It'll be continued to the nineteen. At thirty PM. Is there a second, that's a friendly one, I don't need that one second.
Adam, conservation needs on the twentieth, just to let you know.
Okay, and, and I know you had to meet, I'll call it early this month because of the way the calendar opened, which puts you ahead of us this time. I'm thinking whatever happens at the stormwater committee meeting can be tentative, waiting to hear from Concom. Okay, and if, if, if we're, if we're going to. If we make decisions on anything, they'll be tentative, if they affect something Concom's doing.
Okay.
Or for that matter, if something happens, come before planning that we should talk about. So that we're all on the same page. Any of the comments, hearing none, I'll call the vote, Mr. Pilling? Stella?
Hi.
Barry?
Hi.
Erito? Spula, hi. Spula, hi. Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Uh, you want a paper copy of the.
The next item is agenda item four D. Review Discuss Act six twenty, oh, is the LLC.
Jim and Tron, they have like scary visions. And yeah, but we never, they never made it.
I'm seeing.
You know.
Doesn't work with.
Sorry.
Everything else? Haven't? Where are you?
Go ahead.
All right. Do I like to? Oh, the disc, okay. That's fine. Right, so for the record, Nick Fassandola, Level Design Group.
Excuse me? Please, we're trying to conduct a meeting. Go ahead, Nick, try it again.
Problem. So for the record, Nick Fassandola, Level Design Group, uh, here on behalf of the property owner and applicant of six twenty Spring Street. Um, our request today is uh, not a typical request, uh, we're looking to finalize some outstanding issues. Kind of hanging out there over the past few months, uh, preventing the stormwater management permit from being, um, closed out. Few months back, uh, the Stormwater Committee essentially reviewed the final plan and approved the uh, design for stormwater management improvements at the existing site, which is a redevelopment project. Additional to, uh, satisfying final comments from the, the stormwater agent. We seem to be at an impasse with a couple of these comments, so that's why we'd like to discuss these items with the, uh, Stormwater Committee today, hopefully come to a resolution and, uh, get this permit issued so the, uh, applicant can uh, obtain their building permit and start the site improvements and building improvements as part of this project.
Okay, there was an email from, a, a long email with, with a report attached from Nick, and it was September the ninth. This was sent out to the committee. Get this and have a chance to review it. Okay, so, uh, Nick, if you wanna start with the first, um, highlighted area.
Not a problem. So just, uh, I mean, we'll need some input from Todd on this too, but the way we understand it is there's essentially two outstanding issues that are hanging out there. One is a classification issue, um, you know, whether, and that's what the letter is kind of circling around is, you know, is the site considered a, a LUPL under the Stormwater Management Policy Handbook? That's a land use subject to higher pollutant, uh, loads. You know, with that designation, there's a requirement for, um, additional pre-treatment, uh, for infiltration, infiltrated practices and other, um, small things that go along with the design. Nation, um, you know, our position is that the property does not satisfy those requirements, and I provided a detailed description of why in my provided letter. The other only outstanding item which we, uh, believe to be outstanding is that there's an existing drain interior to the building that feeds into the sluice way for two existing catch basins. We're upgrading, uh, those catch basins with stormwater treatment units. Um, and we're, you know, recommending that the interior lines into the building be inspected and cleaned during construction. Um, I believe Todd wanted to see those, that work done prior to the permit being issued. Uh, some logistical problems with that, that they still have a lot of equipment in the building. Um, and, you know, they have to mobilize and move out a lot of that equipment. So they're looking to do that work in conjunction with the interior building work. So it's not that we don't wanna clean the lines, we don't wanna inspect the lines and fix them if there's something wrong. It's more or less, when is it appropriate to do that work? So we, we are not opposed to doing that work and there being a condition in the final permit that says the report or other documentation of the status of those existing interior building drain lines which feed to the sluice way um, and then eventually discharge down that way, um, be cleaned. It's just that we want to be able to do that work at an appropriate time when all the interior renovations are being done, the building's been cleared out and, you know, the contractor's fully mobilized to be able to do that work.
As I recall, the inspection of the drain lines, it was Mr. Agia, the building commissioner, who asked that they be scoped because he was not comfortable moving ahead until he knew the condition of those. Uh, it, it was specifically Mr. Agia. Now, obviously, when we were out in the parking lot that day, those two drain holes that we saw, that was discussed. But I know that was, I, you're telling me nobody has scoped those lines?
That's correct, and it's my understanding that Mr. Agia doesn't have a problem with, with it being done during, you know, at the time that the interior building work is being done, as long as that, that work is done. Unfortunately, he's not here today to, to speak to that fact, but.
Goes back to the site, is, I wanna say February?
February, March, I would say.
Had two of them. Initially, uh, Todd and I were out there. And then we had one with the Stormwater Committee was present.
You know, in, in addition to that, our position is also, you know, these drain lines take water today. These are active drain lines, they have active connections to these existing, um, catch basins. So the water is draining, you know, we don't see it being a, a major issue, so if there was a lot of standing water that was occurring in that area and there was, uh, something obvious that said, okay, that drain line's not working, we'd understand, let's get that scoped out ahead of time, but like I said, the, the applicant is seeking to be able to do that work ahead of time.
So you're replacing the two basins, new plumbing to the sluice way, but I think there's two pipes coming from the building going to those basins. I think that's what he's talking about scoping, because other than that, we can't scope the sluice, that sluice way, because the size of that camera will not follow it.
Correct, there's, there's lines that essentially come in from this basin and it kind of comes down, hits a ninety interior, uh, manhole and connects to here. Same thing with this, it's based on our record building plans from what we can, uh, determine. Uh, there's a line that comes here and then also ties into that sluice way. So these are being upgraded with stormwater treatment units to provide additional, uh, treatment at the point source, so the, the pipe going to that, we're just gonna pull out the existing catch basin structure and then replace it with that stormwater treatment unit, match the invert and keep everything essentially the same.
Um, that is ultimately what the only problem I had was, is the invert, the, the, the new thing you're dropping, the invert is two and a half feet lower than the existing pipe, and the existing pipe's underwater. So I was concerned that the elevation of that new pipe that would be two and a half feet lower would be lower than the bottom of the channel it discharged to. And that's why I asked the elevation of the bottom of the channel to make sure that you weren't below the channel.
Okay.
And then his response was that it might only be twenty-eight inches, not forty-two inches, that's still over a foot lower than the existing invert now. And if the pipe's always got water, then I'm just afraid it's gonna be below the channel. So then you're gonna be going uphill with your water. That's, that's why I was concerned. It had nothing to do with cleaning it out, it had nothing to do with, they, they putting in the, the structure that made it better, it was just that you're two and a half feet lower. Because the invert right now is only fifteen inches down from the rim, so that's what's at about seventeen-five and you drop it to fifteen, thirteen.
But that there, okay, um.
And again, right now, that entire twelve inch pipe is generally submerged all the time. Yes, it handles water and it flows, but it might be even with the water in the gym. If we drop it three feet, it might.
It may not work, no, understandable.
That was my concern.
Okay. Uh, there may have been this little miscommunication there, I apologize for that. We'll, we'll look into the, the elevations there. And, I mean, if we can get everything to match and work with the, um, you know, stormwater quality unit provider, I mean, it is tough that with minimal cover there to get the structure in and have everything work properly.
And he said that they were gonna possibly be able to get it to twenty-eight point five inches below the rim. Um, I believe, uh, but again, that's still over a foot lower than the one that's there now.
What's there now, okay.
And my comment was that if it's always submerged, it's gonna work, but it's also below the channel. And, and they meant to be full all the time, and that's all the swirl and all that, so I'm not arguing about the water. Below still.
Okay.
So that was the concern. So I wanted to be, to know the infiltration of this bottom swell now, sorry. It's not a swell, it's a.
Sluice way.
Sluice way.
Yep.
Because if we give them approval and they start and they go, oh, we're two feet below it, then we gotta redesign.
Okay.
Thanks. Cleaning it out is, is not the concern now. That gym is okay with it being done at the time of construction, because that's when I'll have the equipment to be able to rip that whole basin out and we can pipe through it much easier.
Yep.
So my question is, I understand that the work that would have been done or has to be done inside the plant is one issue. Why haven't, why haven't the drain pipes been, have been scoped from the, the holes in the parking lot, at least into the building?
Well, I would assume they just wanna do it all at once instead of just doing a little bit and then coming back later, because I don't know what there is for access ports inside the building. If he says it's ninety degree bends, you wouldn't make it very far.
Yeah, we believe there are some access areas, but there might be some machinery covering the top of those ports at, at this time.
So are you gonna use existing pipes, but you're gonna change what's the manhole is out, the two out in the.
Correct, the idea was to keep the existing pipe and put in a, a different structure, one that cleans the water versus just collects it. Right now, it's just a standard, you know, a catch basin with a grate, water goes into it, we wanna put something in there to improve, um.
Dramatically.
Yeah, you know, for sediment removal and things of that nature and take care of that.
So have you talked to Mr. Agia about this?
Well, only in the day that the site worked, I haven't talked, because I, again, I didn't, what, me, it wasn't about cleaning, it was only about.
Okay.
This is the first I'm hearing about cleaning the.
Yeah.
Okay. But also, you weren't out there the other site visits.
I was not, no, somebody else from my office was.
Okay.
Um, so I'm piecing this all together, I apologize that I wasn't part of the initial conversation.
I want to apologize too, because some of this, I haven't had any time to deal with this. Um, there's been several of these stormwater issues that I just can't get to because they seem to have more and more fires lighting as fast as I can put them out. So I haven't responded to them either, but this, yes.
Uh, Mr. Ferry, you have any questions about the drainage that we're talking about, whether it's scoped before or after?
No, no, we just, I, I understand the logistical problems of process and movement and whatnot, but I believe those two structures you replaced and have a pipe coming from the building into those basins.
That's correct.
Those probably should be scoped because you wanna avoid chasing illicit water in the future, because that's what it could be.
Yep. I mean, they seem to be solid holding water, as Todd said, they are, there is some standing water
Right.
i- i- in the pipe, so I don't think it's, um, there's a poor connection or they're, they're deteriorated enough to be infiltrating into the ground at that point. Uh, but yeah, I mean, we would, obviously, eh, eh, old construction like this, when, when we do pull that out, that pipe may need some, may need to be lined, it may need to be improved. Um, you know, the only way we're gonna find out is when we get out there and, and dig into it and really see what's there.
A, a lot of them, I have a feeling it's just, uh, roof water going through the building and going into the system.
Yeah, it probably is, given the type of building, um, that this is. So as far as, so as far as outstanding issues, it would just be, let's do our best, get an elevation on the sluice way, um, and then see what we can to do to match those existing inverts. It may have, it may, we may have to swap out and go to a different unit, maybe like a storm scepter. I think we can get a little bit more, uh, clearance versus, we were proposing, it's called a CDS unit, has a swirl, um, type separator to.
But it's a much slower height going out.
Correct, yeah, with the, with the storm scepter, it's almost like two chambers, you know, and we'd be able to maybe work something, um, to, to a different configuration to make that better, but if those are the, if that's the only outstanding issue and Todd would be happy, then, you know, we'll.
Well, that was, that was one of them. The other one about the LUPL, um, ladies' higher being lower. D E P isn't clearing the fence of the whole site, I just want to say, you take like a plot of a target and pull the mine basket in, and if you're just gonna repay a part of the parking lot, well, we're less than thousands, we're okay. I think D E P looks the whole site. However, everything they have here meets the regulations for LUPL, so I thought the response is gonna be, we haven't made a determination whether or not the site's LUPL, but all our drainage just conforms to the LUPL requirements. And that's where I thought it was gonna end. Not a long discussion about whether it was a LUPL or whether it wasn't, because you have everything in place for a LUPL, because it's a redevelopment project, so you meet all the requirements. So that's where I thought this was gonna go, not into an argument. Site conform, and then you're silent on the determination on the site being LUPL, but yet you still can.
So like I said, we can, we can agree to disagree on if it's classified as a LUPL, I mean, I've, I've.
You know, it's not saying that it is or isn't, I'm just saying that you meet LUPL requirements and.
Correct, and like the, 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 the end game with that is because it's redevelopment, then whatever's here complies with stormwater.
You still have to meet certain requirements and regulations and they meet all those.
Yeah, so with regards to that, so.
So one more time, for those of us that don't remember, what's a LUPL?
And use of higher pollutant loads.
Right.
And D E P defines it, in addition to fleet storage and that kind of stuff, uh, that if there's over a thousand vehicles trips per day from the site.
Okay, um, so as I read through this, there, there may not be a thousand trips a day currently. But when you look at a redevelopment project, are you looking at the entire site from one end to the other? So that, let's assume that they have their operation going, their grow facility, and they actually run the rest of the building to, I don't know.
Whoever.
And then.
Thousand trips a day.
Then gazillion trucks and all that good stuff. So is what we're looking at all inclusive? Or are we only looking at part of it?
Well, that's, that's the bridge here. I'm saying, I think you need to look at the whole thing. He's saying we don't, I'm not giving this company, but and I'm saying, I, it doesn't really matter because he meets the LUPL requirements, and that's what I thought the response was going to be, not a, a discussion on whether it is or isn't. We don't need to decide whether it is or it isn't LUPL today. We just need to know that whatever drainage she's got would meet the requirements of LUPL if the site was determined to be a LUPL, and he doesn't.
And if every square inch up there was used by whoever.
It's nine million cubic feet of area.
Um, another Raytheon comes in, that chance. But a large manufacturing company that employs a lot of people on free shifts a day. Because as I read through it, that was my one thought is, wait a minute, I know that the grow facility isn't gonna have that, but and I realized part of the plant's gone, the western end was taken down. But I, I looked, my question really was, the entire site, just the part we walked around, uh, which is, is down in Wana Boulevard and river. The other, just, just again, for my edification, the sluice way and the drainage from the parking lot does not go into the river, it goes into a basin and is disposed of that way?
No, what, what enters the sluice way does discharge.
Does discharge it from our river, yes.
Correct, yes.
On the east side of Wana Boulevard.
Correct. In the back of the property where we're doing, uh, this parking lot improvement, we have some, um, bio-retention basins, the water goes in, it gets treated, and then it overflows and goes over. So this is, like, this area all drains to the back here, you know, and this area drains down here. It's kind of two separate areas.
Okay, so when we were walk, walking down the driveway, walking towards Wana Boulevard, going east, we talked about that area that's right inside there, on the right-hand side. That little brick building was that we thought was a fire something or other. That was also a disposal area, wasn't it, for water?
Proposed or existing? Because that was where the sluice way of the toll booth is, it's behind that brick building. But they were proposing another basin right up by the street.
Correct, a little small little basin. That's the other one that's gonna collect, just collecting treats.
And that one does not go into the river?
No, that one eventually overflows and it's into the drainage system. Yeah, if it overflows, correct.
Okay, all right. I, I just wanted to make sure that what we were talking about was still what we saw.
So that, that was my third issue that we're agreed is to this basin, the ground one of mounting, that's gonna form under base of the water going to it. It's gonna come up eight inches into the basin, which I, I think it's gonna impede its ability to infiltrate as assigned. The response was that the water doesn't go down in the ground, it only goes up the sides, so the ground one of mounting is a. As a sign, the response was that the water doesn't go down in the ground, it only goes up the sides. So the ground one mound is irrelevant to the calculations.
Say that again. What do you mean it doesn't go into the ground?
It doesn't go down, it only goes sideways.
It goes both ways. It it also goes.
So if it goes sideways, it's still got to drain somewhere.
No, I understand that. The the ground one mound is, if you just keep pouring water in one spot, it'll start mounding like a cone under the ground, under the basin. Well, in this case, it comes up eight inches into the basin.
Okay.
What I'm saying is if it's eight inches into the basin, then the basin, the water can't go out the bottom of the basin if it's such a ground one. And so I wanted them to revise the calculus, raise it up that eight inches and say, all right, well, assume it because it's still infiltrating from eight inches up down. And then I wanted to adjust it. And the response was the water's not going up the bottom, it's going up the sides. So we don't need to adjust our calculus.
Correct, that's that was the response provided. And and the other thing is to keep in mind is, you know, under the redevelopment standards, that's there's really no work being done here. I mean, this is all existing flow, so we're putting that in to treat it as best we can. Um, you know, we're governed by existing elevations, right? The edge of pavement right here where we're coming in is twenty-two-one. The groundwater is only a couple of feet deep, so we don't have enough elevation to really raise it and keep it outside of that water table. Um, and there's no other, so what we're saying, you know, the long and short of it is it it will go out the sides. We don't have it, we don't have any concerns or issues with it functioning hydraulically. But, you know, at this point, it's going to provide some improved level of treatment for your standard storm events where you get an inch of rain or half inch of rain, whatever goes into there. The mound should be minimal and it will treat the water and improve that existing condition um, under the redevelopment standards. Because, you know, there's no really, you know, this wasn't originally proposed, this was put in at a at a request to kind of add some additional treatment to this area. You know, the 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 main scope of the project is this work back here. You know, all these other items, you know, these these basins that we're improving, um, where there's other questions here, those are all above and beyond what the s- main scope is of the new parking or the redeveloped parking lot area to improve what's there. So these are improving the 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 water quality treatment of what's there. This is here to improve to the best that we can. It is a tight site. There is high groundwater there. Um, you know, there's no, there's not even room to really put a a catch basin in it or anything.
No, it's the response to my comment to bend that because that's what we can do and it's redevelopment and all that. Whatever you find, the response was, no, the water is not going up the bottom, it's going up the sides.
But I apologize for that. That's why I'm taking care of that.
That's why I haven't been reading any comments, but it was the the response, it weren't lining up with the question necessarily. So I'm glad next year we can, but again, the response was that, then it's okay.
And I'm. Are are you saying the water under the bridge?
Yes.
Well, and that employee of ours is no longer with the company. No, that it was Sean. He's, uh, not now, he, uh, he's on to V H P, so he's being big time. But that's why I'm here and I looked at all this and I said, why did you answer it like that? So I apologize.
You met the first time you and I were out there in February when it was so cold.
The was he the younger gentleman or the older guy?
Oh, so he was the pleasant one.
Is the other guy not pleasant? I apologize for that also.
Let go.
But I I can provide an updated response with with the the information I presented to the to the committee today.
Concerned with the elevation of that.
And we we will dig into that.
Right, I don't need you redesigning once and start from start for rather know now that it's going to work.
Okay, yeah, and we'll dig into that.
Are you before any other boards in town?
No, I believe we're pretty much wrapped up. Conservation is still open, but we're not actively attending hearings until everything has been completed.
Kind of like, so the changes, any modification? Where's the two hundred foot on there?
Oh, it's way up here. It's, uh, bang, kind of your flood, it's somewhere in this area.
It doesn't show on this sheet. But it's in the middle of the park.
Okay.
So the stuff we're talking about, this basin here and these structures here are outside of the commission's jurisdiction. Other than water from these new structures technically drains to, eventually drains to the river through the sluice way about, you know, a thousand feet.
He changed it from a C, but he follows the.
C D S to a storm scepter.
And then change.
Okay.
We're still proposing to provide improvement to what's there. And I think that's, you know, the underlying, um, item that we want to make sure, but it's where, whatever we're doing is it's an attempt to improve these existing conditions to a, you know, historic mill site, which has been operating like this for.
Are you all set with planning? Remember the gravel? I'm not. I'm sorry. Sorry. But so he closed the hearing based and we're going based on the stormwater agent and the building inspector being okay with the plan. So that never happened. It's been well over twenty-one days.
So they need to give you, uh, uh, some kind of letter authorizing you to go over twenty-one days.
So yeah, because they never gave me that.
They obligated the issue within twenty-one days.
We understand that, yeah.
Give them.
Yeah. And then I need, I need the, I need the final plan. And I think the final plan should probably come to the meeting so that we at least have it and we, yeah. Then we can, I can have them sign new order. So it's basically going to be the same order with a new date.
Sure. And nothing's changed. I mean, this last plan, I think, is late June. Um, so nothing's changed. If we do modify this, there there will be a new, uh, a revision that essentially just would change these two notes.
The one we're going to want to see.
Um, but yeah, no, we would, we would definitely, I'll 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 email you on the side, um, and we can all that figured out. Sorry about the.
Yeah, it's been sitting in a pile and you know how to get rid of those files.
Oh, we want to get rid of two.
Sounds good. So Mr. Pilling, um, what do you need so that you can make the recommendation to this committee? I know you've got to review this.
So this committee is already closing here. And it was contingent, the approval was contingent on the final review. So my final review has not been satisfied because I have three open.
Well, and he said he's going to look at.
No, no, I understand. So I have three open contracts. One was the elevation of the sloughing. Number two was, uh, the ground one mound here. Number three was the level.
Level, yeah.
So all he needs to do is give me a response that says, maybe a revised plan for those those elevations depending on what he gets. But just a response that's adequate and then I can issue the contract.
So what do you recommend we do today?
Nothing. There's nothing to do. Let's say the hearings are closed.
All right, but you're waiting for information.
I am, so.
Correct, yeah, and we just wanted to.
He's going to provide that information.
Yes, we just wanted to come in and be able to talk to everybody and get an update and just kind of coordinate all this.
It's solved between the the other, Dan and Campbell, um, on their site who went took a couple of vacations and somebody was let up in a hospital or something. And I've been busy and I took a couple of vacations and it kind of stalled. He's here to get it moved.
Oh, okay. Uh, so you're all set with that gravel parking lot that that got approved by planning?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
There, I believe there is a special permit for the use of marijuana growing facility and and the parking, all that was approved by planning, yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions, comments, or anything about that? So if not, it's between Mr. Pilling and Mr. Fazendola to get everything wrapped up.
Very good. I appreciate you guys' time and it's good to just come in and talk about these things in person sometimes, so.
August next year, I'd like to make a motion, we take item five C out of order.
Uh-oh.
I was just going to say, the last time he appeared was on the screen.
Oh, you guys, you guys gave it to me that day.
I I said it wasn't directed at you.
Oh, I know, I know. Oh, I pa- I passed it along too, trust me.
I know you did. I get a phone call and I said, yeah, that's what happened. Um, is there a motion? We have a motion to take five C out of order. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a second, um, any discussion, all in favor, Pilling?
Hi.
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 Let's just remove the the neighbor in the audience. Yes, that was why I did it. It wasn't the next time. I like that.
Keep you here.
Right.
Okay, so agenda item five C, it's Brook Street Solar Project, Grasshopper. So what I know about this is the last correspondence, um, resulted in the site visit we had, and then we came back here and had a meeting. Um, I've since gotten an email from, uh, Mr. Hafiz, um, only regarding the assessor end of this in that, um, the, uh, board of assessors will require an affidavit relative to that property that they want to acquire, the Crawford property, that it will not be developed, that it will remain in sixty-one B. And, um, also the board of assessors will place a lien on it once, once the real estate transaction happens. Um, the lien will come off the property that is Crawford. The a lien will be put on that property, uh, for the new owners, and there will be an affidavit required. And Mrs. uh, Hector is working on that, the standard language that we would use uh, that property not being further developed. Um, and the site visit, um, was, uh, when we came back, what we talked about was, um, the amount of of square feet of forest that will have to be re- removed, cut back to make an appropriate, uh, fire break. And we also talked about, uh, having a, um, but it won't be a, I don't, it won't be what like, this won't be like that toll that's down there now. But that ditch in the back of the property, there'll be something put there to allow a fire truck to cross because there will be, in effect, a a somewhat of a gravel road along the back so that if a fire truck has to get in there, uh, that gravel will be able to support the weight of, that road will support the weight of a fire truck. And that the property must, the the part that's going to be cut um, has to remain, um, has to be maintained so that it doesn't grow up uh, into more bushes and stuff. It has to stay open. Um, so, Mr. Pilling.
I.
On the basins because.
Well, that's why I've been with with Nick here, because that, from what I understand, they're proposing to remove all the bad material and replace it with perme- permeable, yeah, permeable materials so that it will drain. And I I don't know if it's possible, I'd bring anything to add to that.
Is it? But it's not your company, is it? I thought they went with Atlantic.
No, I'm still technically the engineer record and, yeah, I know. And this is the first I'm hearing of the back parcel and all that. So I'm a little taken back by that, but I'm glad there's a a resolution in the works for the other issue.
Um, my question is, you were going to get stuff last week. Hasn't arrived.
Yes, so.
I explicitly asked if you were involved. And I was told, no, Nick is not on this project. He's, and I thought the name Atlantic was mentioned. Is that an engineering firm? Okay.
That's who did the original design and permitting back in two thousand and eighteen.
So th- this goes around and around and periodically you pop up?
As of late last week, I'm now back on.
So that tells me since the phone call followed up the meeting, when the word and the name Atlantic was mentioned, I guess that didn't work out. That's my, why you don't have plans because they were coming. So also out there when we were on site, uh, yes, the commitment was made that those basins are going to be dug up, that they have a new contractor because the contractor, the general contractor and the electrical contractor both had their names removed from the permits because Mr. Agia mentioned that. And that, um, the basin work and getting those batteries approved by doing this clear cutting of the land was all going to happen at the same time because initially I had had a conversation. I've had repeated conversations from Mr. Hafiz that get the basins fixed, get online and start generating. Deal with the battery separately. I mean, they could have been generating over a year.
No, no, I understand.
But in any case, whoever makes decisions, the latest decision is that all of this is going to come together and the basin's going to be fixed and operating and the battery situation's going to get resolved. And and after they cut down the trees and they buy the land and all this other good stuff, and it's going to go online. And Mr. Agia made it very clear to them. If either of those two things don't happen, especially the priority is the basin. It will never go online if those basins don't work. I mean, even if you get the battery issue, buy the land and cut the trees and get the battery issue resolved, the basins don't work, it's not going online.
I understand.
So that's basically what we don't talked about because we came back here after the site visit and these were the, uh, commitments. Mr. Hafiz was here taking notes about who he had to contact. And again, the last thing I heard from him was uh, an email asking about the affidavit that has to be filed relative to, uh, the use of that land to keep it in sixty-one B, which is open and wild space.
And we did also require that once they remove this material, that both the design engineer and myself need to witness the bottom of it to make sure all the material was removed. And then we watch them bring in the good material to do it this way. That we both have to sign off on this.
Yep.
And oh, the other thing was that was when we were on site, um, initially, they were talking about accessing the woods behind the battery storage units. But it was pointed out, that's not a good place because they're on fire. You don't want fire trucks right there. So it's down in the corner that you, when you come up and you start to make the curve to go up behind the batteries, it's that first corner area you come to where that road will cross the ditch to get into the the wooded area that's going to be cleared.
Okay.
So that was talked about too.
Correct.
So now what do you know?
So, like I said, so since late last week, I, you know, um, Grasshopper reached out because we've had a little impasse between ourselves and them with these outstanding issues. I'd given them a laundry list of things, you know, it's control construction I need to sign off at the end on, that everything's been built according to plan. So I've made a list of all the things based on my as-built plan. A lot of it is all stuff that everybody's aware of, the deficiencies with the basins and um, a few other things. So I've recently developed a plan set, you know, for the repair work that's required. So we did an as-built a few months back. Um, so I looked at the grading and, you know, some of the site grading wasn't done properly, so the the capacity of the basins isn't there. So some of that needs to be corrected. So I did some calculations and verified.
We saw this plan, right?
Um, no, it's a different plan. It's a different plan. So that plan was to kind of go in a different direction. This is a plan to repair, to get everything back to what was initially approved. So there there there, so we have the approved plan. And then we have what's there today. And then I just worked on issuing a plan and their contractors reviewing it. And then after they are, um, have reviewed it, I'm going to submit it to Todd. That it essentially details, you know, how to repair the basin, remove the material. Like I said, I want, you know, coordinate inspections with Todd. It's listed right on the plan. The type of sand that I want put in into the hole after the material's removed. Um, the the grading that needs to be corrected to satisfy the volume requirements, which were, um, approved under the original design plan. All those things, the, um, the outlets for the back basin need to be reconstructed. There there's supposed to be two pipes back there. There's only one. They're they're much lower than they need to be. So all that's going to get ripped out and fixed. So there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done, not only to satisfy you guys, but I won't sign off on it either, um, as far as the control construction, uh, affidavit. So, um, I produced that plan. I sent it to Grasshopper actually yesterday. They're reviewing it with their, um, contractor that they're going to be bringing on. We want to, we're going to have a meeting on it, make sure everybody understands what the what the scope is. And then we're going to get it to Todd to review and just make sure he's, um, okay with all the, um, items that we've included in there. But it's essentially, we're not changing anything. It's just what the process from here to get to what it should have been in the beginning.
It's not a repair, it's total reconstruction.
Oh, and in some, in some instances, yeah. And that's why I felt it was necessary not to just give them the approved plan and say, here, you know, make it like this, to give them clear and specific direction with, you know, what's there to minimize the amount of changes that need to be made while still making it a conforming site. I hope, if that makes sense.
Do you know if they've already hired a contractor?
I believe they have somebody, um, in the works. The the overall project, um, we'll call them the the general contractor Orbital is still involved. So Orbital is going to hire a site contractor, um, to do the work. I don't know who that person is yet. I'm hoping to find.
Negotiating costs.
Yeah, and and the the reason I did that plan was so they could also price out that work and kind of, you know, get a contractor on board for a certain contract to to do this work. So they satisfy everything because we don't want someone to come back and be like, oh, well, I didn't know that. So they satisfy everything, because we don't want someone to come back and be like, oh, well, I didn't know that was part of the plan, I didn't know that had to be done. That's why we're making a plan set that details, make it like this today and everybody will be happy. So that's, that's the goal.
So what you've done with the plans is not a modification, is it a clarification?
Correct, it's essentially like a construction clarification on
Or construction guidance.
Yeah, yeah, so it, we're not changing the design, we're not moving the roadway, we're not changing the type of basin. It's mostly putting on paper what they need to do, because they have to excavate up out a lot of material and providing those specifications.
The electrical contractor, because Mr. Aggie, I said there'll have to be a new one of those, because panels have to be removed.
Panels will have to be removed, I can't speak to the electrical contractor situation, I'm assuming they'll get somebody on board.
Next time you talk to Grasshopper, mention to them, we asked about the electrical contractor, we don't assume anything anymore.
Oh, I understand, I understand. But I don't even know where they are, unfortunately, I'm only given certain
What you need to know.
Parts of the story where it doesn't help out in the long run, as you guys are aware. But like I said, I, I'm not even, this is the first I've heard of purchasing the back land and click cutting it and making a driveway and all that happening.
I think we said like sixty thousand square feet going from woods to grass presumably, then there may need to be some drainage up there to, to, to slow down that water.
Oh, I would assume so, yeah.
But at least left it at the time that the engineer would be looking at it, so.
I don't
You're the engineer, that back property, it would make sense, it's, it's the engineer, not another engineer. And the other concern is that what Mr. Hapess asked was, is this gonna require another stormwater permit? And Mr. Aggie said probably, because of the amount of disturbance that's gonna occur. It's not the same property owner.
Oh, so are they gonna lease that property?
No, they're buying it.
Buying it.
So right, they're leasing the piece, they're all, but they're gonna buy the other piece, so it's two separate property owners, so it's a separate stormwater permit for that lot.
Okay.
They're gonna disturb more than thirty-five thousand square feet.
Yeah, and they'll probably, you'll probably need drainage, because when you, and
So when you're talking to them again, say you were at the meeting and they, Stormwater Committee wants to know who's the engineer for the property they're buying. Because if you're gonna do it, you need to know it now.
I would like to know, I'm pretty busy.
Since it's gonna be another engineer, I mean, we're gonna be talking the same stuff next summer.
Yeah. But, I mean, right now, my main focus, just, just so you guys are aware, you know, I want that basin fixed, just as mu- as much as you guys do.
Basins.
Basins, correct, yes, yes. And, you know, unfortunately, that work didn't get done over the summer, where it was the perfect opportunity to do so. And I, I wrote many emails detailing that. But hopefully, everybody's on the right track, all the proper players are gonna be involved soon and they can get that work going. But I am actively working on that, I can
It's gonna be doing, other than Mr. Pilling, who's gonna be doing site inspections when construction is taking place, so we don't have another repeat?
We would be doing inspections
Stuff in the basin that doesn't belong there?
Correct, yes, I hope that wouldn't be the case, but yeah, we would be doing inspections on that during construction.
Anything else have questions, comments? Mrs. Bosley, you would come up to the podium, please.
It's being recorded, you can watch the reruns. chlorine Bosley sixteen eighty Pine Street. Just in case this requires more, I know you said it wasn't modification, it was whatever you said. But if it does, it would, you know, so many times we've had plans that don't match.
Yeah, so
And so Planning Board won't have that.
Right, so at this point, all these proposing is construction documents of how they have to take what's there now and get it to the new plan. If they wanna change that approved plan, it has to go out to Planning Board, Conservation and Stormwater Committee for us to approve. Which is why I believe they're going this route of just rebuild, build, digging it up and making what it was supposed to be from day one.
Okay.
Which was the approved plan. So as of right now, a lot of water's coming out of that entrance and going down the street. Once they fix this, the water should be staying in the basins, that's the intention.
I, I understand the intentions, but so if it doesn't drain in the seventy-two hours as it's supposed to, then what?
Well, then that's a different problem. I, I don't know, it would depend on what was causing it, obviously you have to shoot elevations and make sure it was, like maybe if they built too low or whatever. It's gonna depend on what's causing it to happen.
Okay.
But then, yes, it would, it would need to be adjusted in order to meet that.
Okay.
But I can't tell you what the announcement is yet, because I don't know what the problem is, it's theoretical at this point.
All right, and the last time we were here, I believe, not the last time, the time before. Mr. Aggie, I had said that it was supposed to be pumped if it hadn't drained in seventy-two hours. It's been two weeks, it's been two weeks and we've got a lot of water still in the basin.
We will make phone calls.
Okay.
Then what was in there when we did our inspection, they didn't realize it was still in there?
There's still quite a bit of water in there, so.
When you feel this will go out, you'll reach out to Mr. Hapess?
I will, and it will be by phone, because I got access to my email at present.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
So anyone else can
The agreement was until it's time to the basin was fixed, that they would de-water these basins.
Yep.
So that they would have attached them with all water during the storm event.
Yeah, it's raining. Yeah. So one item I just wanted to kind of mention, I know we had talked about it before. Todd, is the, the bottoms of the basins. I think having that be some crushed stone with filter fabric
We talked about this, right now it's supposed to be like grass.
Lomen seed, you know, I just wanna put, I would prefer to have a layer of filter fabric and a few inches of crushed stone autumn ground cover, just so there's no doubt that, you know, any of the loam would impede the infiltration. So everything would just go into the basin and that would also help by putting that filter fabric down. You know, as the site continues to stabilize more, i- if it does need to be cleaned out, they can just pull up that, pull that filter fabric over. Pull the stone off to one side, pull the stone out, replace the filter fabric and then bring in fresh stone and redo that, because that may need to occur after the improvements are done, because the site, if you guys were there a couple of weeks ago, it's not stabilized, you know, it's still the pollinator seed they put down last fall has not taken. I mean, we had been under severe drought conditions and it's tough to, to grow and stabilize a site. But, you know, if they are gonna, if the work's gonna move forward this month, hopefully. And the site's still not stabilized, that's something I'd like to see, you know, for both basins. Just have crushed stone at the bottom instead of lomen seed, now would that be acceptable?
Yeah, so right now, lomen seed vegetation, the pearl and everything, and the roots will end up binding enough, but over time, it could reduce the infiltration. Crushed stone makes it so that it's far less likely, but if leaves and stuff fall in the decomposion, we'll get plants growing. But it'll take far longer for the basins to fail.
Yep.
I'm okay with crushed, I don't know how this very feels about it. You're talking like at least like four inches deep?
Yeah, it's about four inches of crushed stone, because
You're talking like a smaller stone, not like a
Oh, yeah, like a one-inch minus, yeah. So essentially, it's all gonna be beach sand, essentially, you know, septic system sand is what I expect for the, the depth that they put all the garbage fill material in, all the way up. And then that last few inches, whatever, three to four inches, filter fabric and then crushed stone and establish that proper bottom elevation. Just to, as a little extra helper to, to make sure that thing drains properly. We're trying to do everything we can to make it a proper drain infiltration basin.
Yeah, it, it sounds like a great plan, there's no way of grabbing, like you mentioned, because when constraints came into winter. No way to grab soap before it goes in the rectum fabric.
Yep, no, exactly.
Maybe I roll a stone that upstream, maybe.
Yeah.
Have that removed.
Yeah, no. So yeah, I think that's, if that's acceptable, you know, I would like to point the contractor in that direction versus four inches of lomen seed at the bottom of the basin.
Just keep telling them, if this doesn't work, we can't go live. Have to tell them that every day, if it doesn't work, we can't go live.
Nope, right there in the conditions, we understand, well, I, I understand and I've conveyed that to them, so
I hope you're gonna be with us for a while, Nick.
I hope so too.
No, but I know that's not your fault. Anyone else have anything?
The whole thing is to make sure that you don't take any chances anymore. Everything has to be inspected, viewed before it gets
Oh, a hundred percent, I want Todd out there too, just to
I think it's
Yeah, I know we can't live out there, but
Everything is going
Yeah.
Hell, every time they do something, they
I think the biggest problem was, there was no local oversight, and I don't mean local town officials. There was not a person on site who actually looked at the work that was being done. If you sit in a car all day with the AC running and playing with your telephone and only jumping out of the car when a town official comes by, and don't go and look at it. And you're dealing with somebody who, if you told them, that's wrong, they'd tell you, shut up or you're gonna be filling that hole, or to that extent. The, it's just a matter of, and then the pandemic hit. They couldn't leave the country, they couldn't get into this one anyhow, okay? But all I can tell you is
You've covered this.
There was sufficient, there was sufficient notification on a regular basis to Grasshopper from me about the problems I observed. And I wasn't on their payroll, so it wasn't like the oversight, it, there wasn't any personal opinion. So, okay, so we're all set, this will be on next month's agenda, but any updates?
No, no problem. I know, like, like I said, my goal is to get Todd that plan, hopefully, I know, I know you guys are closed on Friday, but so hopefully try and get it to tomorrow. And I know you need some time to take a look at it, but I know they'd like to get going before the end of the month. Are you on vacation next week? All right. Maybe I'll send it to you tonight, you could take a look, you could, you could take a look at the draft tomorrow, let me know if you there are the issues. But
Okay.
So you, just so I know when you'll be out, what days?
We'll talk.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so we're all set on this one, this will be on the agenda for next month for an update. So we'll go back to Agenda Item four E, hours of operation for solar farms under construction. Why is this on here?
At the last meeting in my notes, I think you wanted someone to reach out to the Planning Board and find out what were the actual hours that they were all, so were allowed to work.
But, so our understanding is, you can see during the week, it's seven AM to seven PM.
I, I know we set that in, we, we have, we wrote that in
I don't think anyone's working until seven PM, because even though they asked for an extension beyond five, when I asked if they were doing it, they said they weren't.
I don't recall the time that, that we set in it, but it was, it was decided on what they could or could not
Okay, so Roz, when you have a chance, would you send an email to Carrie and just ask her to check what the Planning Board set for those hours? Just so
Are we talking all solar farms or are we just talking Arujos? I mean, I understood it like the general
I think it should be a general thing.
Okay. And Arujos was going, I think, seven to five, because they asked if they couldn't go to seven and we said yes. And when I asked them if they did, they said, no, we didn't find it necessary. And they were going seven to five and leaving a little bit early on Fridays or something.
Yes, but when he was here the last time, he said they were falling behind, so he wanted to work later if it was allowed.
But he was told seven is, is it, that's when we decided to see if the Planning Board had placed any other hours, shorter hours than seven to seven on weekdays. Okay, so if you just send an email to Carrie and ask her to look at that one specifically. But going forward, obviously, we would, whatever they say, we would say, the Planning Board set hours for solar farms
And move the
On the construction at whatever they are, okay? Okay, Agenda Item four F, recent vote taken on August seventeenth regarding Hart Street drainage. So I asked this to be put on here, because when I was reading the minutes, when this item came up. I initially allowed this to be on the agenda, because I thought it was a new problem. It was during the discussion that, when I'm listening to the discussion and look at those pictures. I realized this is just a repeat, a rehash of the ones that we said, of the problem we said we would no longer take action on. So the vote had been taken, I asked that the second and the motion be withdrawn. Unfortunately, that was incorrect, because once a vote is taken, the only way to get rid of it is to rescind it. So I need a motion that we rescind the vote regarding the Hart Street drainage problem.
What was the vote that was made, what was the motion?
Okay, it was moved by Mrs. Katavia, seconded by Mr. Aggie, voting unanimously on a roll call vote. To send letters to any property owner on the north side of Hart Street. If it is determined that they may need to regrade their driveway to help elevate, elevate, that should be alleviate. To alleviate the runoff problem. So the motion should be to rescind the vote that authorized sending letters to property owners on the north side of Hart Street regarding driveway regrading.
In that last meeting, no.
I don't remember that.
I do.
That, that vote though, I don't remember the motion in that vote.
Yeah, and what, as again, when I'm reading the minutes, I'm thinking, I said the wrong thing, that's not if, if the vote, if the vote is not taken, then you ask for the second to be withdrawn.
Oh, no, it's not that, I just don't remember that discussion in that vote, I mean, that whole motion, I don't remember that.
Oh.
I think you realized we'd already discussed all this previous and you weren't really
Oh.
You were tuned out.
So
Is there a motion to rescind?
What, what was the date of that?
Roz, I think I was up there too.
What was the date of that meeting? As long as I want to put that in the motion.
August seventeenth.
I'll make a motion that we rescind our vote taken on August seventh, twenty twenty-two. That requires sending letters to Hart Street North Side people. Is that's our good intention?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Sorry, we want to discuss.
That's my public input.
Or I'm the discussion right now, I'm the most
We're in discussion about a vote.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Aye, so we, we have a majority vote, okay? Twenty, Agenda Item four D, twenty forty County Street, what do we have on that?
Four G.
Four G. Lisa, have you anything cooking on this one?
Twenty forty I do, but not twenty four G.
No, no, Agenda Item four G is twenty forty County Street.
Okay, yeah. At our last meeting, while we were listening, we had a public hearing presented by the owner to reestablish the wetland line.
This is a cloncom meeting, right?
Establish the twenty-five foot no-touch buffer zone. And as well as allow them to resurface with gravel. They've, they've also agreed to restore within the twenty-five foot and signage and fencing, so we, yeah. Um, in order, but we did approve that, so I think it's on there, because it's a resurfacing and it may be greater than thirty-five thousand square feet.
Well, and this is why when we do our, the next one, regulations and bylaws. What is considered disturbance, if somebody's got an existing parking lot and they're just resurfacing it, is it disturbance? If not, so ultimately what they've got is a gravel parking lot now and it's going to be similar, like they use recycled asphalt or something. So technically, it's not really a change.
It's more of a repair of something existing.
Yeah, so, yeah, so technically, I don't think it triggers disturbance, but I, and we need to define this in our regulations.
Okay, okay, so this is
We need to try to define what falls under our jurisdiction committed to planning and conservation.
So this is just an update. Roz, put this one down for the next month's meeting and Lisa, if there is anything that you want to tell Um, Ross, put this one down for the next month's meeting and Lisa, if there is anything that you want to tell us about, it'll be there. If not, we just pass over it. Okay? If anything happens that for some reason that everything doesn't fall into place through the Concom active action.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, yeah, I think I agree with Todd that I would, I think, you know, resurfacing, we need to clarify that.
I think if you're adding blacktop to blacktop or gravel to gravel, you're just making a repair. If you tear up blacktop and decide you're gonna start putting in gravel or other stuff, I think that's a whole different situation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, uh, but in any case, uh, schedule workshop for regulation bylaw review. Um, since we have three regular people missing, um, Ross, let's see if we can do this outside of the meeting, uh, see if we can come up with some dates, uh, October. See if we can do something then.
About two weeks.
Yeah, you missed off like the last two weeks. Are you looking to try and do this before our next stormwater meeting? Is that?
Oh, we may have to set the date at the next meeting.
The time's off the week before. Yeah. So we're now. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Then off the last week, next week, you talked me into first effect.
Yeah, but with, with four, three members, regular members missing, I, it doesn't.
I'm saying that those are the two weeks it would be available.
Around meals.
All right, okay.
We'll throw some dates that work for us.
Okay. Uh, agenda item eight A, update Clearway Solar, uh, fourteen twenty, um, and fifteen twenty to William Street.
So they cleared the trees, they popped all the stumps and all rocks, and we went in and did test pits. We did about ten test pits. And water table was higher than they previously calculated in their design. So they are redesigning the drainage basins. Then they reached the point where they realized they need some more tough bits because they're gonna retain the priority since we went back and did another half a dozen. Any day now, I expect to see some revised plans showing revised basin that has separation of water table that they didn't have. And so we're waiting on that. So right now they're doing some minor underground electric work, running some trenches of electricity in areas that the drainage won't be in, but they're kind of just waiting until they get a revised plan. So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have a lot more to report.
Okay, so this.
If this changes the drainage, like we just said, the moves will like that. If it changes drainage, you may have to go back to the conservation and the planning board and stormwater to reopen the public parks. Depending on what to do.
Okay.
We won't know until we see it.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or anything?
Uh, comment, uh, would be, um, I think prior to our next meeting, we should see some sort of restoration of that vernal pool if they plan to do it this fall.
Oh, yes. And, and they were hydro-sucking last week, this week, whatever it was. So it's good timing for hydro-sing.
They haven't done it yet, right?
No, but they say on September fourteenth, they visit the.
Yeah.
Over in the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't say when they're gonna be doing the work, so.
It had been told to us that they would be doing it this fall.
Okay, and, and the, the weekly meetings that we get reports, those have been going out to the stormwater committee. Everybody should.
Yeah, I checked.
Look at them, uh, just so they know what's going on. Um, and the site visit that we had there for traffic control, uh, Mr. Ferry was there and, uh, the two chiefs and Peter from, uh, Clearway. So it was, the discussion took place and it was left up to, they can make left turns and right turns, um, because the problem was the way it was set up, uh, the really big trucks trying to exit needed so much room to exit, they were actually going into the yacht across the street to make the loop. And the owner didn't mind, but we said this is gonna end. So traffic control at that site from the Arujos property will be controlled by whoever's on duty at the detail. Uh, you can go either direction or depending upon the traffic conditions at the time, uh, the police officer will determine what's gonna stop and which way the turn's gonna go and all that other stuff. So that, that worked out okay. Agenda item five B, report on nine, nine oh three Tremont, six twenty-four, Middle Street Solar.
Uh, the, uh, email we got a few hours ago from them states that they have hired a contractor to the site where they are finalizing the plans for the building from an application, so it should be submitted soon. Protesting with the planning board to finalize the decommissioning agreement to ensure the necessary bonds are replaced. And everything's been ordered and they expect it to happen in early to mid twenty twenty-three.
Wow.
And I just wanna say that for decommissioning, now we've got the battered storage units, that's a different dynamic on decommissioning, which I think they have to renegotiate for Brooks Street Solar Two or whatever, but, uh, so we have, so they're still moving forward.
Well, there's one other little snag. I don't know how many times this has come before the Board of Assessors, because it's taken out of sixty-one A and put it back into sixty-one A. Well, you take out this much, but we shouldn't have taken out that. It goes on and on and on. Well, I think most of us remember from the very beginning, it was understood there would be crops planted underneath the solar panels. Well, the legislation was passed that allows that. So the land now has to go back, my understanding is, into sixty-one A. So it'll be coming back before the Board of Assessors. Okay? Now, one of the whole, one of the holdups.
I just look for the people at home watching. Most solar panels only, if you beat off the ground, these are supposed to be like, you know, the grounds so they can drive on.
Actually, ten.
Or ten feet, so they can still drive on, because most people don't picture farming of any of those panels.
I, I, I don't know who's been advising them from day one. All I can tell you is it is rare that the same property comes back to obsessors, gets approved. No, take it, change that, and then let's go back. And then we have the path that was winding through the thing, and we're gonna change, no, 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 relocate the path to the brook or some. It has come to the plant, the assessors so many times that when I heard this, I said, is this the end? Is this, is this going to be the final determination? So, um, my understanding is, uh, at our next meeting, assessors, there will, we have to work with somebody to get this land back into sixty-one A agriculture. Because it was taken out or a portion of it was, a whole bunch was taken out and some was put back and the pocket's still out. It's gotta go back. It's just. I, I.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There is an issue there because this is gonna still be used as agriculture.
Yeah.
And it's going to be used as farming.
Yeah.
Uh, Middle Street one, they're talking about raising animals there.
Mm-hmm.
And one on Tremont Street. So is it gonna be taken out of sixty-one A? And?
Put back?
No, no, why would it be put back?
Because it's already, it's already out. This is what I'm saying. I don't know.
Keep it out. Leave it at home.
No, 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 because the legislation makes it.
The assessment.
Huh?
Changes the assessment.
Exactly.
Well, if, if does, but you know, the whole thing, what's the argument here is that it's being used as both.
Right.
So where does it go?
Under the new legislation, my understanding, this is why I don't know who was advising them. Somebody should have been advising them, I would think, an, an attorney who knows something about the chapter land and land. From day one, we heard it was going to be agricultural with solar, and we said, hey, this is the first one we're gonna have. Now, somebody advised them to take it out. So land was taken out of chapter, so the assessors acted on it. Then I believe the next thing that happened was we took out too much. So we wanna put this much back. So there's still some of it, it's, that's out. My point was, why was anything taken out of chapter sixty-one A, knowing the legislation was pending? So that we could have avoided all these back and forth and back and forth, and it's.
But we're the stormwater committee, we're gonna have to deal with it.
Yeah, but we are.
So, um, the latest thing that I heard, uh, came from whoever is advising them now, notifying the town, the legislation passed, and the land has to go into sixty-one A again. And as I said, when I got the notice, I said to Mrs. Shek, how many more times are we gonna do this? Is this the end? Is this gonna be classified? She says, I think so. But again, I don't believe there should have been urgency to pull it out of sixty-one A. Um, because they said from the beginning, uh, that it was gonna be agricultural. And I thought, hey, that's like cranberry bogs that have, uh, solar on them, just these are gonna be tall ones. But anyhow, um, the assessors will work through this, but, um, the, I'm glad to hear that sometime, so that they're gonna start clearing the land? Is that what's gonna happen?
That's what it sounds like. It said in the middle of next year is when the panels are coming. So I assume they start clearing the land in late spring. Speculating. It does sound like it won't happen this fall. It'll be next year, but it's sounds of it.
And this is the one we extended till December thirty-one of twenty-three, right?
They have to be done by the pilot agreement, by the stormwater, by the planning board, they, the conservation, all of their things run out at the end of twenty twenty-three. Yes.
Okay.
Even with the COVID, um.
Yeah, because it'll be in one year. So, yeah. Because remember, we're now, this, this is going into the fourth year of our stormwater.
Oh, yeah, because I wasn't, I wasn't even here when they, so, yeah.
Anyhow, they have to be in December.
Uh, agenda item five D, Forest Hills Housing, anything new on this one?
Nothing since last week.
Uh, plans, yeah, plans been delivered? You don't have plans?
It was only a month ago we did the test pits.
But when, when I went to the Titan Conservation Commission meeting and he asked for another continuance, which he got to, I believe it's November.
Now that it's supposed to be coming empty, yeah. Planning board meeting the ninth. I don't know if to that respond.
There, it was, it was their attorney that was at the meeting.
Joe, I don't, I don't think they.
August.
I don't know if they responded.
August fifteenth.
Well, no, this board doesn't have any high plans and nothing for us to do.
August the fifteenth, Titan Conservation Commission. When he got the continuance, I was saying, you know, Dyton supports that, uh, because obviously it hasn't come to us. And the attorney said, I delivered plans today. I said, did Mr. Pillen get some? He said, yes. Surprise. Okay, it'll be on for next month. Public input, are you public?
I have some public input.
Go ahead.
Um, uh, permitting and compliance team meeting, we discussed Maris development and some turtles that are out there and.
Development, Lisa?
Maris.
Oh, Maris Lane.
Okay, yeah. And, um, basically, there was a short, brief discussion that we should probably recommend to the stormwater committee that discuss, um, limiting the timeframes of maintenance of drainage structures based on.
Natural heritage at that time.
Yeah, they do, November first, two March, I believe. Or beginning of March. So I think you want to maybe incorporate that.
So when we do our start stormwater inventory, we just wanna make sure it goes on, Maris Lane, that those bases can't be moved from March first to November first or whatever, just so that if in the event the highway department has to go in and maintain them, we don't violate somebody else's condition. That's all I thought.
I think you said the dates backwards.
Um, oh, yeah, that they're, they're, they're allowed to be allowed to maintain it between that period.
It don't make sense.
Really?
Buckstalls move around in.
Yeah, but, yeah, but you don't wanna damage, and you gotta allow the basin to be healed. It's not, they aren't gonna be able to grow enough then.
This is their condition.
Let me look.
Actually, actually, don't go any further. This will be an agenda item on the next meeting, simply because now we're getting it to discussion and it's not an agenda item. So, uh, it would give, uh, Ross a title that we can, whatever, we can talk about that. All right? Um, and in the, in the meantime, Mr. Ferry can, uh, check into the critis or the non-critis or whatever it is, the national heritage restrictions, rules, regulations, whatever. Uh, any correspondence other than that message from Mrs.?
I have some other public input.
Oh, okay, Mr. Public, go ahead.
What about Lisa?
Can, Forest Hills is continued to October nineteenth for the planning board. Rista.
And what?
So Forest Hills has continued through October.
Scott Warren.
I don't know how long we're gonna do this, but.
Well, all I can tell you is, uh, at that August meeting, the Titan Concom Chairman, again, because he said it in May, so here we are in August, and again, he told the attorney, get this straightened out in Dyton before you come back here again. So they extended to November. Well, if you're not gonna get it till October, this November thing is gonna happen.
I have thrown out in previous meetings that the commission should table it or the planning board should table it, which means that when they bring it back onto the table, you have to notify the butts. It means it's been so long that everybody's forgetting about that.
Yeah.
And they can, they can do it by regularly, I'm not registered, certified, whatever, but just table it. Because nobody can follow this long. It's too far. If it's one month, it's one thing. It's two months, okay? But you're at what, a year then?
How easy.
Year and a half.
Year and a half, okay.
I was gonna say, it came up, it was on the agenda for one of the, maybe the first meeting when we went about Dora Estates. And that's coming up on a year.
And after two years, Concom can.
So if you tabled it, they don't have to put it back in the newspaper again. You don't have to certify male neighbors, but I would, our requirements and regular, but I'm just a stormwater agent. I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just saying that's what I would do.
I'll talk to Carrie about that and see what we discussing though.
It's been too long.
Well, in the meantime, I will plan to go to the November meeting.
For the reminder, sure.
Todd, go ahead.
Do you have the public input?
No.
Mr. Ferry, go ahead.
So the hot street drainage scenario.
Yes.
So earlier this summer, I reached out to Beta, especially since I found out you're involved with conservation in that same area in the past, and I asked for a quote to the design and engineer. Uh, and it said we could utilize, yeah, that ditch, taking that vernal pool that's in question, the outflow, the perched outflow and some type, uh, some type of water treatment in the ditch. So it's all appropriate, you know, uh, including survey and flagging because we had all the new people come in, have to do the same, you know, it's gonna be tit for tat. Um, I had the proposal back in August. I forwarded it to Mr. Mullin, Administrator Mullin, for his review. There has been no comment. So I put it on the warrant article with special coming for funding. And I believe the capital outlay is gonna review it tomorrow night.
What kind of money we talking about?
It's twenty, twenty-five thousand for a engineering design, about four to five thousand materials, and we do the work. And I need a response from the criminal officer before moving forward, so I bet you nothing's gonna happen.
Except it is, is it on the warrant? We don't know yet.
It could turn, it's all up to the capital outlay committee.
Are you looking at, are you looking for a letter from the stormwater committee?
Um, you can't vote on that. Um.
No, I understand that, but we can put it on the next agenda one. It's gonna be two later and nothing.
So a capital outlay committee, you still have to have a process for, for things that come up like this. It's, you know, it's not in that five-year plan. This has kind of been an old thing. It's not a new thing. It's just, it's evolving still.
As we keep building houses, it becomes more obvious.
There's no way to do work in a ditch right now.
Okay, i- is there a housing development planned for Pot Street, the north end? Excuse me, the west end? The dead end?
Not, not a subdivision, no.
About a hundred homes, so maybe it's just a rumor.
I mean, Hunter's Hill is not far from here. I don't know, I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Anything else under correspondence other than?
Todd, Todd mentioned maybe a letter, but can a letter come without a vote?
Well, the, I don't have a problem with that, um, except that you don't have a vote. Um, when's the?
You need a vote.
No, better than that, you know what? The agenda items. Um, they won't be having, what's the town meeting, November?
Tentatively November. Just, I'm going to review the warrant next week based on capital outlays recommendations. That's tomorrow night.
Um, it's supposed to be November first, I believe.
Right, tentative, yeah. Yeah, that, the reason why you know that date is because they want to secure wherever they have it, yeah.
So capital outlay is meeting tomorrow night? Are you going to go?
I, yes.
What time is?
I was asked, I was told to be there.
What time is the meeting?
You know, I don't know.
It's probably after six thirty because, uh. Because, um, um, the chairman works in Boston and I think six thirty is the earliest he can get here.
Yeah, he might be virtual.
Oh.
Uh, four thirty P M.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Here?
At Old Town Hall, you know?
Because if, if that's all in place and engineering and environmental stuff could happen over the winter, it could be. Depending on what is the condition, you, you'll be ready for work during the summer. I imagine you're going to want it in the dry conditions.
You sure you're on the agenda?
For what?
For the capital outlay meeting?
As a troublemaker, yeah.
Well, it says physically a twenty-three capital plan special town meeting articles, is that what you have?
Yep, one of them is hot street drainage.
And finally, they have an open meeting law company that they have to do.
Which reminds me, I never got a response when I responded to the, um. Complaint we had that said it was without merit because I had read all the blah, blah, blah. I didn't get a response. Uh, any other correspondence other than the email or the message from Mrs. Johnson, which Ross read earlier today? Okay, approval of minutes, um, so.
I'll make much more of the events of August third of site visit, you know, August seventeen, regular meeting, September twelve, special meeting, and September twelve, site. This is it.
The answer's got that, um, type of elevate instead of alleviate.
Oh, so just say, uh, as, uh, as corrected. Yeah. Is there a second on all the minutes? We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, all right, um.
Uh, it's all you.
Aye.
Hi.
No, no, the next motion is. What? Item number?
Oh, no, I can't do that one.
Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion gladly.
Second.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Page twenty-eight.